...follow this meeting forward. This is the September 12, 2013, regular Indian Head Park Board meeting with the board, please follow along.
Trustees Schnapper.
Here.
Walsh.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Hinshaw.
Present.
Alawton.
Here.
Wittenberg.
Here.
In the corner, I appreciate that.
I ask everybody to please rise and pledge allegiance and then afterward, I would ask that you please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the memories of the victims and the first responders from the September 11th attack from 2001 whose anniversary was yesterday. Pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Twelve years ago yesterday was a dramatic event for the United States and I would traditionally read something last year when I was in New York at this time on a trip to the 9/11 memorial, which if you ever are out that way, if you have a chance, I highly recommend that you would take time to stop over there. It was about two blocks away. That quite frankly gave me goosebumps to be in because it occurred to me as I read along the top of the wall, pictures and a timeline and scenario. And of course, this was last year and I was there the day before the actual anniversary to realize that I was reading this at about the same time that the timeline events of taking place were taking place. It just kind of aired, but very moving. I'd like to borrow some comments that I would just share with you in case you missed it, not my original, but from the President of the United States. "Twelve years ago this month, nearly 3,000 innocent men, women, and children lost their lives in attacks meant to terrorize our nation. They had been going about their day, harming no one, when sudden violence struck. We will never undo the pain and injustice worn that terrible morning, nor will we ever forget those we lost. On September 11, 2001, amid shattered glass, twisted steel, and clouds of dust, the spirit of America shone through. We remember the sacrifice of strangers and first responders who rushed into darkness to carry others from danger. We remember the unbreakable bonds of unity we felt over the long days that followed, how we held each other, how we came to our neighbors' aid, how we prayed for one another. We recall how Americans of every station joined together to support the survivors in their hour of need and to heal our nation over the years that followed. Today, we can honor those we lost by building a nation worthy of their memories." Let us also live out the selfless example of the heroes who gave themselves in the face of such great evil. As we serve and remember, we reaffirm our ties to one another. On September 11, 2001, no matter where we came from, what God we prayed to, or what race or ethnicity we were, we were united as one American family. May the same be said of us today and all we have to do. The other day, I received a flyer and I know we've got some postings in the audience, so I appreciate them being here, but I'd like to point out to everybody, so you can mark your calendars now, that on Saturday, November 2nd, the annual Heritage Center Library Book Sale will take place. That'll be on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You can stop by and always find some good, interesting books. And the last thing that I, yeah, that would call your attention is to support the Women's Auxiliary of Community Nurse Health Center with their fifth annual Rocktober Fest, which is going to be on Saturday, September 21st, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Gordon Park in La Grange. And if you're not familiar, that's just a little bit east of La Grange Road and on Ben Avenue and outside of the street. That's all I have of the mayor's report, so at this time, Chair Yousa will move to the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I have the financial report for July 2013. For the month of July 2013, the village revenues were $683,351.71. The expenditures, $326,598.61. And at the end of July 2013, and all funds provided in the village had $1,549,213.39. In July, a lot of the revenues that had come in were real estate collections. That will also show up again also in the number of loans.
So good for the next report.
For the next report, which will also show up.
And that's the first installment of the property tax?
That would be the second.
Excuse me, second installment?
Second installment of the wealth taxes that are paid in 2013.
And then the next time we would see such a major infusion from that would be March, is it?
The tax bills would, we would start to see some revenue in March. Depending on when they actually submit bills out, there could be some revenue that comes in February, but the bulk of it will be collected in March of next year.
And then the balances, all the funds, debt figure, which is a nice figure, we're about to see that all the time, is going to start to go downhill until the next state?
That is exactly, that is exactly correct. I mean, there are going to be some collections between now and February, there's some other collections. There's also some straddling, real estate taxes and various village fees, but the big chunk of money that the village has anticipated will be reflected at this point and also in August, right? And then after that, we'll see it just steadily, well, maybe not steadily increase because we're collecting, but decrease the next collection.
That's all I have. Trustees, questions, comments on the financial report? Trustee Hinshaw?
Got three questions. I believe in the past last meeting or the meeting before, we talked about potentially getting the detail from our vendors, like the engineering firm and our legal firm, so that we could start to see what that was. I did not see that anywhere. I didn't get it in the packet or a line, if it's something we're doing, or am I maybe misunderstanding?
Well, that, I think what you're asking, like the attorney's container, what is covered, what expenses, what of it, everything?
Well, not what's covered, but-
Oh, not what was used up?
Yeah, like on a regular legal bill, you say this project for two hours.
Right. The engineer, I'm going to be getting those reports from him, the attorney, too. I will have a discussion about that for the attorney.
Okay, so maybe I was misunderstood in that we were going to get it? It's, you're going to talk to him if we can get it or if not?
No, there's some issue with cash to it, so we'll have to talk about it and then we'll go forward with what we can provide.
Well, if I, it's got a comment, I think it would be common business practice if we could have in the future just a log of what we've worked on, both in engineering by the month. So if we're not, if we can't do it for the past, which I expect we could, maybe for the future once, now we could have that being done?
I have instructed that condition of engineers start going there.
I would then professional service kind of activity, whether it's a retailer or another itself, he based all of the work.
Okay, I will discuss it with the village council. And we'll provide that information and response to what we are with that, okay? Do you have any more questions?
In the tax payable, there's AT&amp;T activities, there's several line items. Is that for internet or is that cell phone or what is that?
It is under the AT Board List Register 739, Thursday, July 11, 104.
You printed them in orders about the sixth page.
AT&amp;T is our phone provider and that will also be line communications between dispatch centers and the LifeScan, a number of different services, but that AT&amp;T is not cell phone from the phone services that we, that we use.
All right, one last question. There's a question about the credit card bill. I don't know if that's fair to ask here, if somebody would know that information?
The capital N?
Yeah, an item on the credit card bill, so it wasn't in our package, it's something that's on the website?
It will show on the website when we put up an item, have a statement now.
Okay.
The credit card statement?
Yeah, there's a question about an item with charge on that.
I probably couldn't answer that now because I don't have the statement.
Okay, so I could send you an email or something?
Yes.
No?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just, I have one question. We came to an agreement that as far as the $3,000 pay that, which are the new income for the state for the salary, that we were going to accept it. And I'm just trying to find out where we will get that one or two, which account do we look at one or two?
That just stays in, that just stays in the budget. It is a trustee that paid it, but it's not given out until the end of the year. It will show up, it is obvious because it stays there, which still actually went in there, but it just stays within the budget.
Any others? And the chair would entertain a motion to approve the financial report for the month ending July 31, 2013, as presented. Moved by trustee Schnapper, third second.
Second.
Second by trustee Bailey. Any favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose. Can you chair the ayes have? Motion carries. The next item is the meeting minutes for the board trustees from the Thursday August 8, 2013 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections on pages one through three? Four for five? Six for seven? Eight? Nine for 10? Page 11 for 12? 13? 14, 15, or 16? And carrying on, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for August 8, 2013, as presented. Moved by trustee Walsh, she's the second. Second by trustee Alawton, all favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose. Can you chair the ayes have? Motion carries. Thinking September 11, got to report that village board, Joe Consolvo is attending to a personal matter tonight, so he is absent. First item of business is the proposed ordinance to increase the number of part-time police officers to be employed by the village of Indian Head Park. That would be ordinance 2013-9. Frankly, it's important back on us to be this ordinance.
I had a discussion with the village board previously about increasing the number of part-time officers. We had a part-time officer who resigned. We have a full-time officer who's come off on a temporary disability. We don't know for how long or how he's going to improve. So to help us, it doesn't increase the budget any, even though it's giving us an extra part-time officer. It will just cover the hours that need to be covered. So, and the ordinance is what trustee has suggested, the ordinance is more than I'm asking for in case we do lose a part-timer or what we need to cover, cover time. So again, it doesn't increase the budget dollar wise, it just helps us cover the times that need to be covered. So that's, that's what that discussion, with trustees.
Chief San, I understand that would increase the pool of potential people we could use to cover the hours and shifts that need to be covered?
Yes.
And we had requested an increase of just a 10 part-time officers, because the board had suggested-
The board had suggested that we rid it as well.
So I don't have to do that. Okay, I don't have any questions on it.
Again, this may be something where I'm mistaken, but I know we talked about putting ordinances on the website prior to the meeting to allow the community to see them. Is that something that we're going to do?
It's something I should have done, it just got, it just, I planned on doing it from, from the last discussion, I just forgot to put those two in there, but we will be playing with it.
All right, thank you. Then have we ever considered a time period to allow community more than, say, a couple of days to review a ordinance that we're talking about? Because if I understand it right, we put them up when we post the agenda roughly, two days in advance, maybe a little more, and then we may be voting on something in short order. Have we considered a longer window, maybe a month to talk about it and then vote the next month?
Sometimes the ordinance will be, what's going to be on the agenda isn't finalized until a couple of days, you know, in time to post on the internet. There are differences in that sometimes we have a discussion and then based on the discussion that is, you, I think you have seen, where we, and I think it was in Dawn to Dusk, Park Business, but we have a discussion, then we direct the council to prepare an ordinance consistent with that. I think in those cases, when it's ready, you know, we looked at it, I had a chance to look at it, that we can post something like that. Other times, a draft ordinance, put up there either because some, you know, trustee has suggested this particular ordinance that we've talked about and I can't counsel prepare it, or I have something to bring up and it's better to talk from a potential ordinance so we know what we're talking about. And sometimes that won't be ready until the time of the agenda and when we put it up.
All right, but that was part of it, is to get it on the website for the meeting, which I think you're saying we can or we should do that. The other part is to give the community more time to review than roughly two days for an ordinance, because that means they have to be paying attention, they have to know the meeting's on Tuesday, look for it on Tuesday, you know, know where to look on Tuesday, all that. So I'm just asking if we could consider that or if we haven't considered that.
Thoughts? Any thoughts?
Well, I guess, I, being a lawyer and I'm a state lawyer, sometimes, we're not his only client, so sometimes it's going to take a while, like you said, 30 days. Our meetings are every 30 days, so there's no way, I don't think, we could discuss something and have it the next day up on the website, a draft ordinance ready to go. But I think there's a certain period of time that you have to give the attorney to prepare the document.
No, I'm saying that in this example, I think Frank was saying it should have been posted, so this ordinance that we're talking about, if it was posted two days ago, then we wouldn't be voting on it tonight, we would be voting on it next month to give the community a residence more than two days to review it.
So your position, I just want to clarify, you want to have at least a 30-day period for the public to review an ordinance before we vote on it?
I, I think a period, yeah, longer than two days. I don't know if 30 days, 60 days, and I know there may be an emergency ordinance that we have to do, but I would hope that something, you know, like this, we could give more time. So anyway, I hope I answered your question.
Oh, it's not my question, I just, I, I think logistically, you can only do certain, you know, there's a time period you have to do them. If you, not, not at the meeting, but if you want to wait, pass, take a vote and then wait a couple of months to pass an ordinance, I've never seen it done like that.
No, we're not voting, in this example, we wouldn't be voting on it, we'd be talking about it and voting next month, so that the community members could hear the discussion, go read the ordinance if they didn't have the two days to do it, and then next month, they might have comments or want to talk to us in between now and the next month. So I'm asking if we would consider a longer window for an ordinance, rather than posting something two days later, passing it, when some community members have no idea what we're talking about. Because the agenda item says, increase the number of part-time officers, you know, so it's a one-sentence issue.
Well, sometimes I think like this, we have a need in the police department due to illness, the resignation of a part-timer, and, you know, this was very close to being actually a consent agenda item, that it should be able to be passed with no discussion like we're having, such as using this as an example. The board is up here as an elected representative of the people, and sometimes we have to act in their best interest according to the way we see is the right thing to do now. I don't have an objection to try to put ordinances up there earlier when we can't, but we can't, you know, quite frankly, then the village can get together once a month in total without the board and conduct government. We have to go to, and I'm not minimizing the role that all the people have, hope you understand that, but there are just some times that the board has to take action, and that's why you cast your ballot and elect people to represent you. And there are people in this community who don't have computers, as you know, Tom, and whether we post it on the internet or not, whether it's two days or 30 days, it does them no good. So in terms of getting, letting people know, posting on the internet is not the answer. We have to mail a draft copy of every notice for everything we do to every resident in this village. I'm willing to try to put them up ahead of time, so we point this tape, this tape along those lines. But at some point in time, you know, we get the credit, we get the blame, we have to make the decision, and like I said, we're increasing the pool. We're going from nine part-time people, potential officers, to 12. The chief only wanted to go up to 10. And that's so we can cover the shifts, and I think the people in the village want us to do that. And by the way, if you had, had a chance, if you didn't see it last night on Channel 5, and it was like we was, they've had 21 burglaries in Naperville since August 1st, so lock the cookies up. Anyway, anything more about this particular ordinance concerning the increase to the part-time employees, part-time police officers, excuse me? Carrying on, the chair would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2013-9 to increase the number of, excuse me, amending section 2.16010 entitled Department Created and section 2.16130 entitled Part-Time Officers of Chapter 2.16 entitled Police Department of Title II entitled Administration and Personnel of the Indian Head Park Municipal Code as presented.
How about motion?
Okay, moved by trustee Bailey, second by trustee Walsh, the answer, go, come here, please.
Yes, trustee Hinshaw?
No.
Trustee Bailey?
Yes.
Trustee Schnapper?
Yes.
Trustee Alawton?
Yes.
Trustee Wittenberg?
Yes.
Didn't miss anyone?
Yes.
Trustee. Okay, the motion passed. Motion carried. Ordinance 2013 issued.
Okay. The next agenda item is consideration of draft ordinance amended title entitled Administration and Personnel of the Indian Head Park Municipal Code by amending chapter 2.64 entitled Participation at Public Meetings and adding chapter 2.65 entitled Recording of Public Meetings. As counsel, we prepare this ordinance because the day of video recording of board meetings is upon us, and it's recent that it has arrived in Indian Head Park. And although we have now started, and I think this is what the second or the third month we're actually doing, an official Indian Head Park video recording of the board meeting, we really had no regulations to go by with respect to the taping and the possession of the tape and so forth. So I asked counsel to prepare a draft ordinance, which is what this is, for our consideration, and that's why it's on the agenda and that's why it's an ordinance. And the purpose of it is to delegate responsibility for the possession of the tape, put some restrictions on the actual videotaping, where it takes place, so that it's not a hazard to people with wires and cords, and that it doesn't tax the power system and put the lights out here on us while we're in the midst of the meeting and so forth. There's some other legal considerations, including letting people know of their rights and people coming to meetings, whether or not, for them to know that if they're going to say anything or be there, they may be on, being taped in some fashion. So I may ask counsel to explain the ordinance that we have as presented, and I had asked him to look at something that I questioned him about, is there's a paragraph that talks about notification of recording, and the, just if I can summarize it, and I'm not quoting it here, but the upshot of that paragraph would require advanced notice in writing to the presiding officer at the village board and any official village committee, because the videotaping can take place not only here, but at a planning zoning meeting, at the U-911 Board, at the Police and Fire Commission, any official meeting that the village has that can take place. And that's people's right. We're not trying to harm that right, but we're also trying to protect people and advance a, an interest on behalf of the community. So this paragraph would require this advanced notice, so counsel, I would question you about that, why it's in here, and what considerations lead to having it placed here, and quite frankly, this can be do without it if we chose not to, and what other options we might have with respect to passing such an ordinance?
Sure. Why don't I first start with just kind of give you a summary of the proposed ordinance and what it does. The ordinance, proposed ordinance amends two sections of the village code, actually, it amends one section and adds a new section. The first section that it amends is section 2.64, by deleting subsection D of that existing section of our code, which dealt with recording and basically then taking the provisions relating to recording equipment and putting them in actually a new chapter, chapter 2.65. So 2.65 is entirely new. Those are regulations relating to both the official reporting of open meetings and the nonofficial reporting of open meetings. So all the provisions in 2.65 would be additions to the code. I think you first have to start out with section 2.05 of the Open Meetings Act. And let me just read a little bit of section 2.05, too, so you have an understanding of that. 2.05, the Open Meetings Act, says that "Subject to provisions of section 8-107 of the Code of Civil Procedure," and I'll tell you what that reads in a minute, "any person may record proceedings at meetings required to be opened by this act by tape filmer of meetings. The authority holding the meeting shall prescribe reasonable rules to govern the right to make such recordings." It then goes on, second paragraph would say, "If a witness at any meeting required to be opened by this act, which is conducted by a commission, administrative agency, or other tribunal, refuses to testify on the grounds that he may not be compelled to testify if any portion of his testimony is to be broadcast or televised, or if motion pictures are to be taken of him while he is testifying, the authority holding the meeting shall prohibit such recording during the testimony of the witness." Thing goes on to say, "Nothing in this section shall be construed to extend the right to refuse to testify at any meeting not subject to provisions of the -701 of the Code of Civil Procedure." So then if you go over to 8-701 of the Code of Civil Procedure, it basically repeats the second section of section 2.105, where it describes the right of the witness, and it says, "No witness shall be compelled to testify in any proceeding conducted by commission, administrative agency, or other tribunal in this state if any portion of his or her testimony is to be broadcast or televised, or if motion pictures are to be taken of him or her while he or she is testifying. This section shall not apply to judicial proceedings." So basically, the import of section 2.05 or the Open Meetings Act-
So basically, the import of section 2.05 of the Open Means Act and section 8-701 of the Code of Civil Procedure is that when someone comes up and testifies, like before the village board, and that is somewhat limited, sometimes, for example, on a zoning matter, when something is not clarified at the public hearing for.